When they come up, okay Dave, you need to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sure.
I think Catherine told me at least she wouldn't be here for the interviews.
Yeah, she's on vacation.
They've only got things coordinated.
Yeah.
Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners meeting for July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. If you would please stand for our invocation and pledge of allegiance. This morning, we'd like to take a moment to remember firefighter Corey Campiture, who was killed in the Butler, PA assassination attempt on President Trump. He was a father of two. Maybe just remember him for his service to his country. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For purposes of attendance, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster.
Present.
Carlton.
Present.
Getty. Smoker.
Here.
Hatfield.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Tunisin.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Thank you. Reports from state and county officials at this time. Are there any state or county officials that would like to update the board?
Good morning.
Good morning. Actually, I've got some exciting news today, so. Got a couple of awards you want to give out to a couple of our Marine deputies for some outstanding work that they've done, gentlemen. Sergeant. These are our guys who patrol the lakes throughout the summer, and we've got three hundred and twenty-seven lakes in the county. However, we don't get to patrol them all, but there's a lot of them along with mosquitoes and everything, too. But these guys, you've been with us for how many years now?
Fourth year.
Fourth year?
Second.
Second year, yes. So anyways, I want to read you a statement here. On June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, approximately three-thirty in the afternoon, Marine Deputy Nolan Lockhart and Eric Godby were observing marine activity at the launch at the Go Lake Park in Prairieville Township. While at the park, Marine Deputies Lockhart and Godby observed a male attempting to pull another male from the water. The deputies made contact with the two males. They pulled one male victim out of the water, and it was apparent he was suffering from a medical emergency. The deputies found the male was not breathing, had no pulse, and immediately initiated CPR. The deputies found, excuse me. I got you in my mind here, so I didn't know if you could hear everything. Sorry. Marine deputies completed CPR for approximately six minutes. They also contacted Berry Central Dispatch for EMS response, and upon arrival, the victim was transported to Borges Hospital, where he spent three days and released and returned home to continue to recover. Let me repeat that. The victim was transported to Borges Hospital, where he spent three days, and was released to return home and continue to recover. Gentlemen, that's awesome. That's phenomenal. Deputy Lockhart and Deputy Godby Swift's action during the emergency, along with their advanced training, helped to save this person's life. Deputy Lockhart and Godby, exemplary performance and action in this situation is consistent with our mission, vision, and value statement at the Berry County Sheriff's Office, and we hereby present them a lifesaving awards. Berry County Sheriff's Office presents this lifesaving award to Marine Deputy Eric Godby in recognition of his lifesaving actions to a male pulled from the water in Go Lake in Prairieville Township, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Berry County Sheriff's Office presenting lifesaving award to Marine Deputy Nolan Lockhart in recognition of his lifesaving actions to a male pulled from the Go Lake in Prairieville Township on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Had a great fair week. Now we got this. It's a good time here now, isn't it? Yeah. This is the monthly report. This is for the correction facility. The correction staff has booked and processed one hundred and nineteen persons into the jail for the month of June, and additionally, released one hundred and seven back into the community. The daily average population was fifty-six persons in the jail. The staff has transported fifty-one inmates to and from various locations, including court, medical facilities, and other counties. In addition, we have fingerprinted one hundred and ten persons at the front counter. Kitchen staff has prepared four thousand five hundred and twenty-nine meals. The cost of two dollars and sixty-eight cents per meal. We go back to five years. Twenty-twenty-four is one hundred and nineteen, and twenty-nineteen was two hundred and seventy-three. Releases one hundred and seven, upgraded to two hundred and ten. Daily average population was fifty-six. No, it's, back then it was seventy-four. Transports, we had fifty-one, and two thousand and nineteen was seventy-seven. Prints, we did one hundred and ten this year, and two thousand and nineteen was seventy-two. And meals served for inmates, four thousand five hundred and twenty-nine, at two dollars and sixty-eight cents. And five years ago, there was six thousand five hundred and seventy-one at a dollar thirty. Berry County Law Enforcement logged eight hundred and fifty-one complaints from month to June. Fourteen individuals were arrested. There were ninety-two accidents handled. Forty-two, excuse me, forty-four involved deer. One involved alcohol or drugs. Five hundred and fifty-five criminal histories were run for warrant entry and for warrant request. Seventy-nine sex offenders were processed. Hundred and eighty-seven pistol licenses were processed. Incidents handled, eight hundred and fifty-one in twenty-twenty-four. Two thousand and nineteen, eight hundred and three. Accidents handled, ninety-two, compared to seventy-two in two thousand and nineteen. Car dealer accidents, forty-four. Two thousand and nineteen, there was thirty-two. Arrests, twenty-six. Two thousand and nineteen, there were seventy. Alcohol or drug-related arrests, five. And two thousand and nineteen, there was thirteen. That's all I have for you today. Any questions?
Any questions for the sheriff this morning? One question. Maybe you can give us some guidance on, doesn't have to be this morning, but I continue to see email correspondence on people that are frustrated that FOIAs are not coming through timely. Is that something you can give us some guidance on, or something you can update us on?
We get hammered with FOIAs, and a lot of them, when we get them, some of them are hundreds of pages we've got to go through with emails, so that's time-consuming. And then on top of that, we're short-staffed. We're getting there. We're going to be short again this time because we had our computers down from, was it Friday? Thursday or Friday?
Friday.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And she just got mine going yesterday, so we'll be getting on them.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Additional reports from state and county officials?
Good morning. Matt Ward from IT, and this is Ivan from our GIS department. Ivan Christopher. I want to let you know he had received an award on behalf of Berry County for his work regarding our GIS, for open data portal. This is an award that was given out by a group of individuals from around the county, or, excuse me, around the state, from different municipalities and other organizations that provide GIS work for counties, cities, and other municipalities. Ivan recently worked very hard to put together the open data portal, which takes a lot of our public information and makes it available at no cost, and makes it generally accessible to people as quickly as possible, so other outside agencies that rely on it throughout the county can gain access to the data and are able to go ahead and get what they need. So wanted to congratulate him for his hard work and recognition by his peers.
Congratulations, Ivan.
And take the opportunity to talk to the board a little bit about the issue that occurred on Friday regarding our information technology systems. As the sheriff mentioned, we did have an outage that affected folks primarily on Friday. Sheriff's Office being a twenty-four-hour-a-day operation obviously has a lot of staff in on Saturday and Sunday, so really, we got a call from our sheriff's office at about one fifteen in the morning on Friday morning indicating that they were having some trouble with their computer systems. And pretty quickly, we were able to identify the nature of the problem and begin working to resolve it. By the time most of our staff arrived here on eight o'clock on Friday morning, we had begun implementing solutions on their computers to allow them to have access to it. But unfortunately, the nature of the problem required us to visit every workstation individually. So we spent a lot of time on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday visiting those workstations, but I'm happy to report at this point in time, I'm only aware of two potential workstations that are not functioning in the Gold County, and they are individuals that are not in their offices on a frequent basis, so we either weren't able to gain access to them over the weekend, or we haven't gotten word from them yet that they were affected by the situation. So if we hear that, we'll be happy to go out and resolve that for them. Luckily, the fix does not take a lot of time to implement on each computer. It's just the nature of having to go to all of them. But if you have any questions about it, I'm happy to speak about it and provide you details about what happened and why.
How many different stations do you have?
Right now, that had the software that impacted them, we had two hundred and fifty or so workstations and servers that were impacted by the situation. There are other devices that might have been in the hands of individuals that aren't connected to the network that were not impacted, but those are machines that we did not encounter for the purposes of this incident.
You got to meet everybody in the county. Isn't that great?
Yeah, well, I mean, the ones on Friday, yes. Saturday and Sunday, not so many of them were here, but they were welcome to come in and hang out with us if they would have liked.
Matt, we appreciate your dedication. Those are things that we just can't see coming. I mean,
No, unfortunately, seven and a half million people, over seven and a half million people were impacted by the issue around the world, and it's still, some companies and businesses are still dealing with outages as of today, so we are very fortunate in that we were able to get most of our staff up and running by the time they returned to business on Monday at the latest, but most people were up and working by Friday. We had, in very short order, machines in every office were working, but it took us longer to roll them out to every single workstation. Unfortunately, the sheriff got missed when we went through the first time on Friday morning, so we did come back to him and try to get him on Sunday, but I think he was at church, so we didn't catch him.
Okay. Awesome. Additional questions for the sheriff? For the sheriff? For Matt?
No, no. I have one job. That's plenty. All right. Thanks so much for your time, Bill.
Thank you, Matt. Additional reports from state or county officials? Moving ahead, limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Good morning. Liz Lenz, Coordinator of the Berry County Substance Abuse Task Force, and I work for Berry County Committee Mental Health Authority. Thank you for letting me have the chance to speak to you today. First of all, I'm always humbled when I stand in a room where so many people have dedicated their lives to public service in some shape or form, so I think this morning, we've seen why Berry County is an incredible place to live, and I appreciate the awards that have been given and the time that people have spent to fix things for people. So I'm also here to fix things for people, and that is to talk a little bit about the opioid settlement funds and some work that's coming ahead. We are progressing in our work with the Michigan State University Needs Assessment, and very shortly, you'll start to see some promotion for people to share their stories and their information to help us better spend those dollars that belong to the people of Berry County who have struggled, suffered, and even lost due to the opioid crisis and epidemic. That being said, we are also recruiting right now for people to serve on the Opioid Settlement Fund Steering Committee and to follow Michigan Association of Counties' technical guidance. We are looking for people to fit those criteria who will bring with lived experience, voice, reason, and passion for this topic. And we'll start to, you'll start to probably see some emails and some promotion from me, so if you yourself feel so compelled and passionate and want to, want to continue a life of service for people who can't, we would appreciate that. So thank you for allowing me time to speak.
Thank you, Liz. Additional public comment?
Eldon Schonberger, Carlton Township. Wanted to address Board of Commissioners regarding FOIAs. I've heard there's some information. This is going on on Thursday. This will be week number two. No correspondence. Either they had to wait an extra couple of days because the FOIA law says it has to be within five business days, or if there's more information needed, it'll take seven. And I know we see no correspondence at all, saying that they needed an extra two days to look for the information, and this is deeply disturbing to think that you can't even, you can't even get the information that you request. And so I find this kind of strange because I've talked to other people who's also requested FOIA, and it's been two or three weeks. And we're setting, we're setting a bad example. If, you know, we're good as a thing if you can't get the information that you need and you ask for. And it also goes back to an accident that occurred back in January that I had. I know these customary and reasonable, but when I forward information from Central Dispatch, sixteen dollars for one page, that is unreasonable to get charged sixteen dollars for one piece of paper. The fees are going to have to start being more reasonable because sixteen dollars, in my opinion, is just outrageous. So I just wanted to bring this to you guys' attention, and I think there needs to be some changes made to get this problem taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
I hope you don't take Larry's idea of the ejection seat. I wanted, Joel Libitz in Rutland Township. I want to say thank you to the new owners of the Hastings Banner, as well as to Jason Bussa for putting on the forum last week, Monday. I did not make it to the last week's Commissioners Meeting. Had things going on, but if you watch that, and I hope everyone in this room does if they haven't already, you'll see a very, a crystal-clear difference between myself and the other candidates. And you'll be able to see exactly where I stand on a number of issues, a number of elements in the room that no one else addressed. That said, a number of the issues that I brought up, which I'm grateful, not just for me running for sheriff, but I'm grateful that we were able to give a voice to a number of the issues at the department. Some of these can be addressed before Election Day. Regardless of what the outcome of the election is, these are issues that need to be taken care of and handled. Again, I'll repeat myself. Corrections officers, average lifespan of a corrections deputy, fifty-nine years. Retirement age, fifty-nine and a half. We're still the lowest paid in southwest Michigan that I can find. I have not seen another county that pays a lower starting wage than we do. That's not a trend that I think we need to incur. Think of all the additional resources it takes to train all of these officers when, you know, we have this, we're just a revolving door. People come to Berry County, it's their stepping stone to Kent, where they can instantly make fifteen, twenty dollars an hour more. So I think that it would be not just, it's not just needed for the department, but it would be prudent financially to be paying an actual living wage to these individuals so that we're not continually seeing that revolving door where people come in, leave, come in, leave, come in, leave. So anyway, I hope that you guys grab this bull by the horns. I hope that we can start addressing this issue before the election. It'd be kind of nice if a lot of this was taken care of before then. I viewed that as an even bigger success, so thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment?
Good morning. My name's Marcia Bassett, and I live in Prairieville Township, and I'm here today because I wanted to introduce myself to the board and anyone here in the audience and watching, let them know a little bit about myself. I'm running for County Commissioner in the sixth district, so that's Prairieville, Orangeville, and part of Yankee Springs. Lived in this community for thirty-two years. Raised our family here, my husband and I. We have three children and have been very active in the Dalton community since we moved here. And in my career, I went to Michigan State University for my first two degrees, and then went on to Western and got my master's in business administration. When I was in, at Michigan State, I was fortunate to get a job with the Michigan Department of Corrections and administered the prison healthcare program throughout the state, and so gained a lot of experience with corrections and public health, mental health, and public service. From there, I got a position with county health departments and implemented computers in those county health departments. I didn't get to come to Berry County, but I did get to travel over the state and learn a lot about community public health. And then from there, I went on to run medical practices and did that for almost thirty-five years now. And so in that environment, got a great deal of experience in business and in budgets, and also continuing to work in healthcare. While I was there, I also chaired the board of the Alzheimer's Association for Southwest Michigan, so got a lot of experience with the aging population as I was running neurology practice at the time. So throughout my career, I've had a lot of experiences in the areas that I think the county works on, and right now, I'm looking to retire and get back into service in my community. I was on the Dalton College School Board for seventeen years when my children were there, and then moved on to the Berry Intermediate School District to work there. And then since then, have done other things, started the Dalton College Education Foundation, and now I'm doing Revitalized Dalton. So I'm a public servant at heart, and I'm looking to come back and retire and serve my community one more time, and I would like to be on the county board, so appreciate your time. I appreciate the service of all of you in serving our community, so thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, Marcia. Additional public comment?
Gary White, Nashville. How many of you folks have taken the time to take your health department survey? Did you even know it was out there? I got it texted to me, or emailed, it was texted to me. How, I'm just wondering how the health department can help with an active shooter? When that came in as one of the questions, I'm just sitting there. It was a survey that doesn't really do nothing with the health department when you're asking questions like that, and how does it? Berry County was the second to get the survey out of two. Once again, it's been, what, a couple months since last time when I talked about the Eaton County getting their survey first, and now we're here at Berry County. Once again, but when I went through these, there's questions I didn't even want to answer and did not answer on that. There was no reason for the questions that were on there. So that was just the one that really popped my mind. I'm just sitting there. Well, what can the health department honestly do with an active shooter education and things like that? Where in the world is this health department going? Do we have a health department that understands its position or not? As I said, it's time that this county gets its own health department and actually does something with the health department, the health of the public. So it is concerning when I went through that survey. Just thought I'd let you folks know, it is out there, and there wasn't very good advertising on getting people to take it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Additional public comment? Hearing none. Approval of the written agenda. At this time, does any member of the board may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items for consideration? Hearing none.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did on item C, did we fill in those, do we have to have discussion for those in order to fill in the appointment and the delegate alternate?
Yeah, we'll discuss those under items for consideration.
Okay.
Not under consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong line. Thank you.
No worries. No worries. Does any commissioner wish to change the agenda additionally? Hearing no such request, the agenda is approved as written. Various correspondence. Does any commissioner have correspondence they'd like to share with the board? Okay. Consent agenda. Commissioner Hatfield.
Mr. Chairman, I move the following two items. First, approval of the July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting minutes. And second, approval of the attached first deputy treasurer job description and reclassification to grade level eight on the BCCEA pay scale.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Tunisin. For all items listed on the consent agenda, discussion is not allowed and a roll call vote is required. All those in favor, vote aye. Aye. Opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. Presentations. This morning, we have Patrick Hansma with Western Michigan University, ours for to give us our medical examiner report, annual report. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't normally need a microphone. I hope you can hear me. So I am Dr. Patrick Hansma, your new medical examiner in Joyce DeYoung's stead. So you enjoyed working with Dr. DeYoung for many years, I know, and you will recall that she has moved on to the Michigan State University College of Osteopathic Medicine to be their dean, and I've been appointed in her stead as the medical examiner for this county and the twelve other counties that Western Michigan University Homer Stryker M.D. School of Medicine serves as the medical examiner. I believe every one of you has before you a copy of the annual report, and you'll see in that that there are some preliminary pages that define who we are, what we do, the state statute that governs medical examiner jurisdiction, as well as some components from the National Association of Medical Examiners, because we are in accredited office, and therefore, our practice is guided and governed by expectations from that agency. And then if you turn to page eleven, that takes you to Berry County specifically, where we see some of the aggregate data from mortality statistics as known to the medical examiner's office at least. And, whoops, I turned one page too far. Here we go. That first table, you'll see summary of all Berry County cases reported to the medical examiner in contrast to deaths in the county. So very top row, total number of deaths in the county, and you can read across all the way to the right-hand column, two thousand and twenty-three, four hundred and forty deaths in the county total. What this whole column down this right-hand side column down this right-hand side basically shows is a trend returning to pre-COVID numbers. And that is actually every county in here is kind of what you're seeing, is a trend of return to pre-COVID numbers. Total mortality, mortality by all causes, all manners, the number of autopsies we've done, complete autopsies, limited autopsies. The only thing that I think is at variance, if you scroll down that right column, looking for the number fifteen, you'll read across that is the number of external examinations. These are bodies brought into our facility that we don't necessarily do an autopsy on, and that's because we brought in a CT scanner to that facility. And so, now there are some cases that we can do a postmortem CT on without having to do an autopsy. And so, that has raised the number of external examinations and very slightly reduced the number of autopsies. So, that's about the only bump in all of this. Everything else is trending down to pre-COVID numbers. With, that's regarding examinations, but with the cremation permits that you see in the table right below it, that is going up. Everybody is preferring cremation over burial in this country on an upward trend. And so, cremation is on the rise. Our office authorizes cremation through the funeral homes. They send us a copy of a death certificate and a permit, and a forensic pathologist signs off on that cremation to make sure that no non-natural deaths are slipping through the cracks and someone's getting cremated before a potential homicide gets missed, which is very, very rare. I have seen it happen in my career, but very rare. So, we review that death certificate and if necessary, any further information before approving that. So, as you can see, it's not just autopsies that we do. We are very busy with many other things. To page twelve, you'll see the manners of death reported, and you see that of the total one hundred and thirty-two deaths that were reported to our office, naturals are still by far the most common. And then after that, accidents, and then after that, suicides. And this is just consistent across the state and across the nation. Most people die natural deaths. No homicides in two thousand twenty-three in Berry County, so that is excellent. We like that news. And then reported deaths by age right below that. If you look across that bottom row, that's your two thousand twenty-three numbers, and you'll see the vast majority of fatalities are adults, fortunately. The only child in Berry County in two thousand twenty-three was the victim of a motor vehicle collision. This was a horse-drawn buggy versus automobile, which is very sad, of course. It does happen occasionally. I've seen it in other counties in Michigan as well, always very tragic. But other than that one instance, it would appear that Berry County is a very safe place to raise children, based on mortality statistics at least. So, that is encouraging. If you turn to the next page, page thirteen, you see accidental deaths by mechanism. And then going down that right column again is two thousand twenty-three. Most of the accidental deaths are either drug-related or motor vehicle collisions. And then, at least in the younger groups, this table doesn't break that down, but I happen to know that. And then in the elderly falls. So, elderly people who fall and break their hip, and then they're laid up and they never recover and eventually succumb, those are classified as an accidental death because there is a trauma component to that. The drug-related deaths there, you see also teased out a little bit by manner on the table below it. And accidental deaths are the totality of them in Berry County from two thousand twenty-three. No suicides, homicides are indeterminate, drug-related deaths, and seven of those nine deaths involved opioids. So, we know the opioid epidemic is still ongoing. However, it is encouraging in Berry County that these numbers are low. It's my understanding that there is a task force in place, and so that is excellent. And hopefully, that this is a positive sign that that is having the needed effect because every one of these, though tragic, single-digit overdose deaths in any county in Michigan is a low number, and that's encouraging. And then the next page brings you to suicides by sex and age, and it's the bottom row that is last year's numbers, two thousand twenty-three. And we see that the preponderance is adult males. This is in keeping with national trends as well. It's largely adult men that commit suicide. And then the following page shows you the suicides by mechanism, and it's that right-hand column, two thousand twenty-three. Reading down it, you see of these five total suicides, which is also a low number appreciably, firearms, three of the five, one by hanging and one by carbon monoxide. I don't know off the top of my head what the mechanism there was, but usually that's automotive exhaust. Somebody locks himself in a garage with the engine running or some other internal combustion engine like a space heater or something to that effect. So, those, that's the data. And in total, the mortality statistics in Berry County are encouraging. Everything seems to be kind of settling back down towards the pre-COVID trends, and our office is able to manage all of this quite nicely so far. We have intact investigations with great investigators and a great chief investigator and his deputies that work under him to manage these. Our investigators are supported twenty-four-seven by an on-call board-certified forensic pathologist such as myself and the other half dozen that we have, as well as forensic anthropologists. And so, we are a robust office that continues to serve, I believe, this community at the maximum standard that possibly could be attained categorically at least. And we are absolutely open at all times to hear from you, to see how we can improve in any particulars. And we invite every one of you to come see us at WMed. We are very happy with the facility we have, and we like to brag about it. So, if you have interest, please come see us.
Field trip?
Field trip.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. So, the four hundred and forty deaths in two thousand twenty-three, so, I'm just trying to understand this. Are these people who died in the county, or doesn't include county residents who may have been taken to a hospital in Grand Rapids or Kalamazoo and died?
Correct. These are, and there's a footnote that these are provisional numbers, by the way. I forgot to mention that earlier. We have, our office doesn't account for every death that occurs in the county, but the state registrar has that, so that number can move a little bit. But that is total deaths in the county. It is not total deaths of citizens of Berry County. If they were transported, for example, to Corwell Health, you know, in Kent County or something, that would not be accounted for as a Berry County fatality.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Doster.
There's about a dozen counties
Yes.
here. Is that your district or?
Yeah, yeah. My jurisdiction is thirteen counties in Michigan. The thirteenth that just joined us was Osceola County. We had them previously. Then they went to another agency to be their medical examiner for a short time and then realized that we're awesome, and they came back.
So, these counties are kind of spread along the entire state, it looks, it appears.
That's correct. As far north as Grand Travers and Lelandaw County at the very top there of Lake Michigan, all the way down to the very bottom. So, we are managing about one point six million people, I think it is, across thirteen counties on the west side of Michigan. And then we also serve as consultants for others. So, there are other medical examiners that are not forensic pathologists, and when they need a forensic pathologist for an autopsy, we serve as consultants to them. So, we provide services to those medical examiners for counties that are not part of our jurisdiction. And then we do the same, excuse me, we do the same for two counties in Indiana where their coroners need a forensic pathologist, and so they come up to Michigan with those cases.
And how do we, how do we stack up in comparison? Are there any anomalies here in Berry County that, or is it pretty much the, consistent with other counties of our size?
No, this is pretty consistent. There's no anomalies that strike me, not off the top of my head, you know, as I think back through reading the totality of the annual report previously. Nothing, nothing caught my eye about Berry County. Yeah. Again, is encouraging that the pediatric deaths are very low. That's the more urban counties in Michigan, if you get over to, towards Detroit, Macomb County, Oakland County, those, they would not be able to boast that they've had no deaths under the age of eleven in two thousand twenty-three. There's just no way. So, Berry County, that's encouraging. Over three hundred lakes, we heard earlier, in Berry County, and not a single drowning in two thousand twenty-three. So, marine deputies obviously are doing an exceptional job, and the award was well given. So, it was nice to see that.
Thank you.
Dragging you back to two thousand twenty.
Yes.
All we heard was the COVID clicker and the death count every day on what was going on in the county. Is there any, when I look at the two thousand twenty-three numbers and it's four hundred and forty, do they not separate COVID deaths? Are those considered natural deaths now? Or where does the COVID numbers actually fit into there?
I do not have the COVID death numbers, so I'm not prepared to answer that question, unfortunately. But everything has gone down. So, and the total of mortality in, okay, I'm a little, I'll just go ahead and say it. So, you get into politics whenever you talk about COVID, unfortunately. But the totality of deaths during the pandemic was not purely COVID deaths. For example, the Cook County Medical Examiner's Office in Chicago published a paper that during their eleven weeks of lockdown, the number of overdoses rose to an extent that more people overdosed in that lockdown than were projected to have died of COVID if the state had not locked down. So, there's, not to drag three years back, retrospective politics back into this, but, you know, as you read down two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, there are some open-ended questions there regarding mortality statistics in every jurisdiction that I don't think we'll ever have an answer to as far as what these numbers truly mean.
Exactly. I just wondered if they were still keeping track of them because, like I said, you saw them. They were in the news
Yep.
in front of you every day.
It can be obtained.
Vanished.
Yeah. That number can be obtained from our office at least. All of our case files are electronic. We have a robust case management system that all of our cases are searchable, and we can search by cause of death. We can search for every case that was documented to have had COVID, if not even related to the death. And so, those numbers are obtainable, but we're not actively doing it. But it can be done, really with relative ease at any moment if we wanted to do that study.
Okay. In the, in the thirteen counties that you guys represent or work in right now, are there any regional trends? Because you go from the southern part of Berry, or southern part of Michigan up to Travers, are you seeing any trends in the general population as a whole?
I mean, the population is aging, you know, just in general, I mean globally, the population is aging. And so, we are seeing, at least anecdotally, I haven't crunched any numbers, but in speaking with the other forensic pathologists, the number of, we mentioned, elderly people who fall, and so there's a trauma component to their death, these cases that we would release from scene without having to bring them in for an autopsy. Every week that I'm on call or one of my colleagues is on call, we're all commenting, wow, we're signing a lot of death certificates, you know, in the past. You know, these would be, a lot of them would be natural deaths that we would release, and their primary care physician would sign that death certificate, and we merely had to investigate without any further involvement. And now, the numbers just keep going up that I release that body, and also I'm responsible for signing that death certificate because there's a non-natural component to it. And so, I'm seeing that across all counties, regardless if it's northern Michigan or southern Michigan. The main other trends that I really see are more seasonal. Where do people vacation to? And therefore, up in those more northern and lakeside counties, we're more likely to see more drownings in the summer. The more rural counties, I would softly say I tend to see like smoke inhalation deaths from like generators and things like that, that I don't necessarily see so much in inner city. But it's, it's not really so much north versus south.
Okay. Interesting. I did notice that statistics on falls. I was going to ask you about that, so you did a good job of answering that because I'm like, Berry County's not really a place of high elevation, so falls wouldn't really be an issue.
Falls are usually ground-level falls in the home most of the time.
And that's like a morbid, a comorbidity when they just don't recover from the fall?
Yeah, exactly. Yep. And so, it's a, because it's trauma, it makes it a non-natural death, and therefore, the medical examiner signs that death certificate instead of their primary care physician.
Okay. Additional questions from commissioners? Quick question.
An occupational, like bad weed deaths, you know, they, you know, because they're always have, you know, places like that. They sometimes have, you know, like what I'm saying that is like, somebody falls into a vat of liquid and they drown or something like that and like farming or anything, like that type of stuff that's, you know, occupational. What do you, is there, is there, things that, do you have any statistics on, on the occupational part of it?
I don't have the statistics, but that is another thing that is obtainable. We can do that. It is documented. All of our investigators do know to ask whether or not this death occurred while they were at work or the inciting injury. Maybe they make it to the hospital, and so we can gather that information. If it is a work-related fatality, then our office does investigate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Hansma, great information. Very thorough report. More information than we can ever probably digest, but it's great to see it. It's great to see positive trends happening now. I appreciate you guys coming every year and presenting and keeping us updated as well, and it's awesome to meet you and your colleague as well. Thanks for coming up, so.
My pleasure. John's pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Likewise.
Public hearings. We have none this morning. We will move on to items for consideration. Commissioner Smelker.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of claims in the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-six cents.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Smelker, support by Hatfield for approval of claims in the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Carlton?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
I move for the approval of the chairman of the Board of Commissioners to shine, sign the acknowledgement of service of process and consent to entry of judgment in regard to Safe Environmental Properties LLC.
And?
And.
Okay. All right. Is there support?
And Robin Peruzzi versus Berry County, case number twenty-four, three ninety CH.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support, Campbell.
Motion by Smelker, support by Campbell for approval of the chair of the Board of Commissioners to sign the acknowledgement of service of process consent to entered entry of judgment in regard to Safe Environmental Properties LLC and Robin Perucci versus Berry County, case number twenty-four dash three nine zero dash CH. Discussion. I think Commissioner Doster had a question on that when we were talking about this.
Aye.
And when I was at Prairieville Township, they did go through, pull up all the information, look at the easements to see if there were any utilities going through there at all, municipality to septic sewer, anything like that, and there was not. They were all clean.
It's my understanding that Michael also called the supervisor, Stoneburner, and had a discussion where he didn't indicate any objection. Is that correct?
Yeah. Prairieville also passed this at their township meeting, so.
Okay.
Yep. They were good. Additional discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Smelker?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Carlton?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
We did have a discussion on this last week, and since you guys weren't here, we did nominate you for it.
We pointed you, yes.
We decided to hold off, and in the meantime, Commissioner Tunison agreed to be the delegate, officer delegate, and Commissioner Smelker as the officer alternate, both able to attend the two thousand twenty-four municipal. So, if you want to read that as Tunison and Smelker, that would be great.
Okay. Approval to appoint Bob Tunison as officer delegate and John Smelker as officer alternate to attend the two thousand twenty-four Municipal Employees Retirement System Annual Meeting and to approve paying the expenses of the officer, delegate, and employee and to approve paying the expenses of the officer delegate and employee delegate to attend in October eleventh of two thousand twenty-four at the Amway Grand Plaza Hotel in Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Smelker, support by Carlton for approval to appoint Bob Tunisin as officer delegate and John Smelker as officer alternate to attend the two thousand twenty-four Municipal Employees Retirement System Annual Meeting and approve to pay the expenses for officer delegate and employee delegate to attend October tenth and eleventh, two thousand twenty-four at the Amway Grand Plaza Hotel, Grand Rapids, Michigan. Additional discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hatfield?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Carlton?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. Unfinished business. Today we have second interviews for our county administrator position. We have three candidates to interview. Those interviews are gonna start at approximately ten AM, so the board is gonna go at recess from nine forty-nine till about ten AM when we start the interview process. You're welcome to stay. It may be another hour and a half or two hours for the meeting, so you're also welcome to leave if you don't want to stay. Thank you all for attending this morning and we will be...
I liked Eric Zuzga today. I felt he was most qualified after listening all three of them carefully again. And that's where I'd have to put my number one choice.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
One, two, or three?
Yeah. Hard choices. They're all very good.
Yeah, they're very good. Excellent, excellent. I really enjoyed listening to Dave. I think maybe a little lacking in experience yet may possibly. But I enjoyed Eric's presentation today. I thought he was very forward with it. Maintained eye contact with me when he was talking with me. I appreciated that. So I guess at this point I would probably lean slightly in Eric's direction.
Okay. Commissioner Hatfield.
I would also favor Eric for a couple of different reasons. Experience is similar. Quincy and Portland are both similar sized communities. They both had significant tenure with those communities. But I think that Eric's involvement, particularly on the financial side, probably pushes things in his favor because to me that's a really key skill that we need to have. I also like the fact that he's had some experience in a little larger community in Marshall, even though it was as a community development director instead of as the village manager. But their village manager experience is really pretty similar. I like Derek's education. He's got a master's in public administration. That's probably the most relevant degree you can have for what we're looking for. I particularly liked his responses regarding the rationale and need for a strategic plan to augment the master plan. I liked his familiarity with the 425 plans. I liked his familiarity with TIFs. I thought he did a good job with the CTE continuing technical education response as far as retaining youth in the community. A big plus is he's already a resident here. So he's proven to have an interest in Berry County outside of simply the employment. And I think I also like his demeanor. He, I think, showed a little more personality today than he probably did the first interview. But I think he's not flashy, but I think he looks like a very steady hand.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smoker.
I also am leaning towards Eric because of his education and his budget work has a little more experience. And my next one would be Dave. I think Dave, they go to different committees. Dave is on. He does excellent work, I feel. I do think he needs some more experience. So I would lean toward Eric.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Colton.
Well, after the first interview, I definitely was leaning towards Tutt. And I did speak with his mayor, Jim Barnes, for about an hour and said he would take Tutt back in a second or a minute, one of the two. And, but the unresolved complaint is a cloud that hangs over that. And I wish that had been resolved before these interviews. So I place and I pick up on Eric is my next choice and David is my third choice.
Okay. So it'd be fair to say that you would choose Zuniga right now, Zuzga?
Yes, based on, I really think Tutt is a fantastic candidate. But the unresolved issue, you know, makes it hard to vote for him. When I look at our voters and if people ask me, why did you vote for someone that has that serious, a complaint that's unresolved? So I will go to Eric.
Okay. Commissioner Doster.
I think that Dave and Eric are both extraordinary. I like a lot about Dave. He is so cautious on how he speaks and he speaks so fluently that he is definitely going somewhere. And I don't know that the job that he's in is going to be intellectually challenging enough for him for the rest of his life. And I would hate to miss an opportunity to move him up. He's been moved up several times because of his innate talent. And it has this kind of, he has a, it's a good narrative that we take somebody of our own, here we're talking about, you know, encouraging youth talent. This is a prime example of taking somebody, an employee, and they work hard. They learn. They're able to achieve. They're able to move up in the system. You know, that's a very good narrative for us to have that that that's possible. And this would be a prime example of it. Any somebody that, you know, we have a substantial range in salary there, well, he would probably be at the bottom of the range due to his experience. So he might be a cheaper candidate to have if we're actually looking at money-wise here. I think that he's somebody that could grow into it. There would be a step, but I think he could grow into it. I think, you know, maybe I take it kind of personally because, you know, I was a county commissioner at 29. You know, so I was kind of in a similar position. Everybody thought, you know, doesn't have any, you know, the experience for that. But you know, you, it doesn't take long and you get your feet under you too. But Zuzga is also very impressive. I love his demeanor. He, he's somebody that would wear so well and is obviously capable, I think, of handling this position immediately, pretty much. It's a stretch for him in that it's a much larger world than where he's been. Job-wise here, I mean, this is a much bigger enterprise. But, and he's local and he knows about Berry County. And I think either one of them would be excellent. I, we're so fortunate to have such a rough choice, I think, of two excellent candidates. I think if I had to toss the coin at this point, just because I think it would mean so much to the personnel of the county to pick our own somebody. I think I would go with Dave.
Okay. Very good input. After evaluating them all and seeing them all twice, the decision got tougher. Because I agree with your statements that Dave is thorough. He's thoughtful. He, he's very thoughtful in his communication and how he answers. And you can tell by his demeanor that he cares, that he knows his stuff. And I, I agree with you. I think I was most impressed with Zuniga, Zuzga, because he interviewed well the first time, but I thought he really outdid himself the second time. I thought he really brought a little more personality, a lot more information, explained a little bit more on the breadth and depth of his knowledge, doing so many different things with the 425s and just some of the things that we weren't necessarily thinking as details. He sold me on the fact that, that he's got a lot of wealth of experience up here. We're just not picking up everything he does. But I like, whoever said demeanor, he's a steady Eddie. I don't think he's going to get flapped up, down. He just looks like, and, and he actually, to me, showed the most enthusiasm about the job, being a Berry County resident, wanting to retire here, building a house here, just seemed to be very committed to it. That, I like, I like Tutt. I like being a sales and marketing guy. I like his, he uses a lot of words. You know, he's, he's got a lot of information, very personable. Could certainly be an asset to the county. But I am tending, I think we're all in agreement that there's not a bad choice here with Zuzga, that he has demonstrated his capabilities to this board, in my opinion, to do that. I don't have anything against Dave Pelon. I think he's, it won't surprise me if, if he continues to move up in the county. If not this position, a different one soon. Just an excellent candidate, all the way around, high-quality candidate, so. But I think we have some agreement here. Ryan, would it be proper to make the motion?
It would be. Oftentimes, it's a conditional offer motion that also includes a substantial motion during it, a plan of a negotiating team with a deadline. Of course, you have a meeting on August 6th and a meeting on August 13th. The 13th might be a better meeting for the candidate because they have an opportunity to, in between times, get to know each other, who they might want to talk about. You know, meet, create with some of your.
Can the board agree on consensus to make a conditional offer to Zuzga? And make a formal offer later? Because I think we have consensus that that's the right way to go right now.
I probably should have a motion instead of just consensus on something as large as that, but I will so move.
Okay. Is there support?
Support, Doster.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Doster to make a conditional offer to Eric Zuzga to negotiate as the future county administrator for Berry County. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
The motion carries. We will move forward with that with the guidance of Ryan and keep you updated. We do not have a meeting next Tuesday because it is the fifth Tuesday, so enjoy your Tuesday off. And we'll have more information, the first meeting in August. August 6th, which happens to be Election Day, which we've all been waiting for. Okay, let's put a bow on this. County administrators report. Luella, would you like to add anything? Okay. Chairperson's report. I am all set for the moment. Vice chairperson's report.
Just very quickly, I had a planning commission meeting last night, reviewed the solar ordinance. We had a good turnout, very few comments. I think that this, it proved the point that when we engage as much of the community as we can in the discussion of the draft, that we can, you know, put something together. That in this case, it certainly didn't keep everybody happy, but it kept the majority happy. And the planning commission did vote to forward it to this body for, with a recommendation for approval. So you'll be seeing that in August.
With very few changes.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
I just had one thing. I've been getting a lot of intense interest in the new enforcement officer. Townships are really asking to have the opportunity to meet him.
Okay.
None of them have so far, that I know of. So that would take some pressure off me if we could have him show up.
I think I know who you're talking about.
I discussed that with him, that he needed to go to townships.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tunison.
I went to Rutland and Hastings Charter last week. And I think it was summertime. They were on quick agendas. So not much happening.
Yeah. I was at Prairieville. I was one of two people there. It was a short meeting. So, you know, they were happy. Commissioner Doster.
And nothing further.
Commissioner Colton. Commissioner Smoker.
Stay at the airport. I'm out tomorrow.
Okay. Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes. And we appreciate your patience with us through another long meeting today.
Gary White. Medical examiner was the first thing, you know, that it was interesting. After you die, if you want to be cremated, they get you for one more tax. Yeah, you do have to pay for that permit. He also brought up politics. What I talked about on Health Department, I'm going to say now that it seems how he brought it up, that survey is political. It is more political as compared to be medical. So I'm not sure they're staying in their lane. The next strategic plan. Last Friday, I asked you folks, what you folks, if you learned anything from the candidates. The candidates are expecting the commissioners to have a strategic plan, not for them to come up with a strategic plan. It is your responsibility as elected officials. That's why I was hoping somebody would have come out of there last. We had master plans in the village in Asheville. We also had, oh, I can't remember what the name of it is now. But it is, the goals for the next five to six years in the village when it was, and it also helped us with grants. Those were adopted by the village council. Your strategic plan should be done. Maybe he can direct how you get there and put the priorities or the state mandates. But it is your responsibility with facilities and everything else to understand. You folks are supposed to have the strategic plan. It's a five-year plan, a six-year plan, not just a 20, 30-year master plan. So I guess that's when I say, when I look at the facilities, have you done your due diligence with, have you got your state mandates in order first and then what is going on after that? The other thing I think was brought up was evening meetings. I don't know if, you're always aware, well, at least I've always been trained to always be aware of what's going on around you at all times. If you looked at last Friday and you looked at even today and you looked at past county commissioner meetings, how many times do you have directors and administrators sitting in here that give no reports, but just sit here and watch you guys as commissioners? Are they on the clock or not? I don't know. Are they taking personal time? So it's one of those things, if you're not aware of what's going on, and are evening meetings the way to go for your commissioner meetings? It would get the public more involved. It was mentioned that your live stream went down. Well, I knew why it went down myself, but once again, you have some responsibility for things like this. When it comes to door knocking and talking to people, I've talked to people that are good resources for the Health Department. I've talked to people, good resources for corrections. There's ideas out there to make these jobs better, make it more livable for the people. So there's things out there. You've got to get more resources in here and got to get rid of the attitude of, this is the way we do it. We're the county. You got to start being, you know, educating yourself and training on what your responsibilities are is part of that process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Joel Ebbetsen, Rutland Township, again. Listening to our former medical examiner, sometimes it was kind of shocking how pragmatic she was about her job. It was, she, the new gentleman that came in, is, she did a good, she did good work, but I think it was kind of refreshing to see his perspective on things. And I don't view what he says as political. It's just the data and facts. And it's important that we look at that and see, okay, well, if we have something again, how can we do this better the next time? Obviously, there's lots of room for improvement there. Election day's coming up and I want to reassure everyone that your ballot will count here in the county. Our elections are free. They are fair. To Mr. Campbell's comment about eye contact, sometimes I don't think they like it when I make eye contact when I'm talking, but that's beside the point. You guys have a big challenge for you as far as the administrator replacement. A couple of things that I would have asked, and one of the things I really appreciate about Michael Brown, is he knows when to give his conjecture and when to remain quiet. And if, there could have, there are multiple opportunities over the past decade that I've been attending commissioners' meetings where he could have run the county if he had wanted to. And he stood back and allowed the board to do that. So I was hoping it would be an enlightening conversation on bond defeasements and other things of that nature, but we'll let that slide. The leadership skills, I think they touched base on that. It sounds like he hasn't made your choice. I hope that this gentleman, he has some pretty big shoes to fill. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment? Hearing done. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Doster?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Colton. Commissioner Smoker. Commissioner Tunison.
I probably should have elaborated on this a little bit earlier when it came to Dave Pelham. I really appreciate the fact that he came here and he is an employee of this county. And I do think, I agree with Commissioner Doster, that kid's going to go someplace. But right now, we're being faced with the fact that we're going to have a lot of new elected officials and a new county administrators. So we're going to need somebody with experience to guide and kind of, that's been there, okay? Under a different circumstance, Dave might have been a good choice. But right now, we've got a lot that we're going to be facing next year and a lot of new people. So I just wanted to, I didn't, I didn't praise him enough earlier that I really think that he's positioned to go up the ladder someplace, so.
Hopefully here.
Yeah.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I just want to make a personal note pertaining to our VFW out in Dalton, which I am the commander out there. About a year ago, we set forth in the county trying to raise $40,000 because we were in desperate, desperate need for a roof. And today will be the last day. That roof will be finished and put on. I just want to give much thanks to coming from such an amazing county that pitched in from all ends. The VFW is down in Dalton, but we had donations from the Hastings area, all the way down to Comstock, Battle Creek. It's just amazing. I just want to express my truly, truly heartfelt thank for everybody that was on board and participated and helped with that.
Commissioner Hatfield.
Nothing else.
Okay. Thank you. I would just appreciate your time and investment and your research over these last, from Friday to today, to get us to where we're going. It's been a long process, as I can tell by Mike's yawn, because I'm feeling the same way here. We need some food. But, and really to all the candidates, from the 11 people that Ryan brought us to go through the process of that to get to here. I know Mike had made a comment about the case not being resolved, but that really did play into my decision on Tutt. I thought Tutt was an excellent candidate. And the case didn't have anything to do with it. It was just the quality of the candidates that we had to choose from. So there was a lot of decision-making to go on there. And when you're trying to find that fit with somebody who's got that calm personality, the experience and the desire to really show that this is their next step, that I think we made the right choice with that. I appreciate all of your evaluation and input. It would have been nice to be able to go into closed session and discuss some of this, but it has to be done in an open format like this. So I appreciate the honesty and openness. It was done very well. Just a good result, so we'll keep you posted as we move through this process, working with Ryan, working with Eric. We'll let you know where it goes. So enjoy the week off. Thank you all for sticking with us this morning for a long meeting. Have a great day.